Get a whole bunch of additional costs shoved on things to try to heat things and pull the frost out and stuff like that.
Right.
So as long as, you know, as long as this is, you know, say, July, something like that. We're we're golden and all the scrap will there tomorrow, you know, put the pad in.
Mm-hmm.
So just so so council knows the next, if you wanna move forward, that's why we're it's on for discussion tonight. If you wanna move forward and you wanna direct. Uh attorney Aronson and myself work on a purchase agreement, we would have to have a public hearing at the next E D A mer- meeting or possibly the May E D A meeting. Seeing what happens with what's going on right now. Um we have to have a public hearing and then they could approve a purchase agreement. And then it would move to council to approve a purchase agreement. And then we'd also have to approve a development agreement. So there's a lengthy process. That's the land if you wanted to see. It's the eight seventy-four is the land we're talking about. And that's our housing development here. This is the racetrack to the south, the back road into the racetrack.
That is the actual property line, I mean not survey, but pretty close.
It's the county's B I S system, so it's probably pretty large.
Yeah, so that the majority of that road is is on the fair fair ground side.
And I'd like to put a, you know, some kind of buffer in between right on that would be the east property line there. That entire line, even if even if it's for now, putting a row of arbor weeds or something in there, get them growing or if we need to put a berm up in there, whatever. I I hate coming in, you know, if if we're if we're plowing snow and we gotta come into that building, which. We'll refrain from it as much as we have to because I don't like disturbing people. Because most of the time when it was time to plow, everybody has their trucks at home. But there's a few set times we gotta come in there to get something. But I just shining, I wanna come in there and shine my headlights in somebody's back window.
Mm-hmm.
As we're coming through there. So I need would like to have some kind of separation there.
Well, the buffer would help the noise also.
Absolutely.
If a semi pulled in and a low boy, and like you talked before, if there was set aside gra- whatever could be put in there would surely help the sound going into the neighborhood.
Right.
We have enough issues out there with sound right now with the racetrack. And that may also alleviate some of that problem. If that buffer was put there with grass or or set aside grass, whatever it may be.
All the all of the tillable acres, I would put into a C R P type seating, which is native grasses and and flowers and and stuff like that. They do help with sound, definitely.
Would you construct your own access off of nine? So it's a big wide one for your big trucks? I mean, you're you're not gonna pull in on this one, I don't think.
I'm gonna widen that one.
Widen this one?
Yeah, I'm gonna make that one like three times the size right there. So then we're not disturbing a whole bunch of stuff. Just lay put another culvert in there.
Okay. And then most most of these trees would come down?
Most of them would stay.
Okay, the building would go?
The building, the building would go from, I would, the.
You know.
Come on up.
Just so you know, that road there now does have semi traffic. When there's a racetrack, there's all kinds of semis going there every Saturday night.
And my building would sit about right here. The the front of it would be about right here.
They do fit.
And then it would go this way and come back. And I'd like to try to leave these trees for a sound barrier. We'd remove these.
Okay, gotcha.
Just this because I I you I like to leave these in case we have a piece of equipment that needs to be parked outside. And so we don't don't have people looking at stuff sitting outside.
So the building would be positioned along way this way?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
Yep. The only thing that I seen out of the whole downfall to this is the bridge that's this way.
Mm-hmm.
I can't cross it.
Of course.
The way it's not rated rated?
No, it's a real light bridge. It must be an old bridge.
No.
So I all I gotta come through this way with everything.
You had five?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? For Tony or for Michael? All right, that is.
Council's wishes, do we wanna move forward with that?
I'd like to hear the public input.
Have the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
So say there's no harm in moving forward with a public hearing.
No.
Well, I was gonna say, you know.
And there would have to be one on the planning and zoning side as well. So there would be multiple chances or occasions um that would be for that opportunity, but.
Right, the property would have to be rezoned. Has to be rezoned, probably an I one. For this project, it's not right now. It's ag, residential ag.
Would the comprehensive plan need to be changed also?
Yes, it would. That requires a public hearing as well.
Okay. And that's that's even previous or prior to the zoning taking place?
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah.
Okay.
So if we wanted to get this so, if we move forward this and Tony could start building this summer so he could be completed by this fall before the snow flies. We need to get the ball rolling.
We need to get the ball rolling here.
As soon as possible.
Yep, yep.
Start working on a purchase agreement draft at least to look at, have a public hearing.
We're gonna be playing around with this in August, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We know how this drags on.
Cause we can add conditions to that development agreement then, if you want proof of financing, whatever you wanna add to the development agreement, which would.
Yep.
Happen before he could close on the property.
Yep.
Or it's or before it's approved by the council.
Mm-hmm.
Who orders the uh public hearing for the comprehensive plan? Is that the council or is that?
Planning and zoning. I believe that falls under planning and zoning.
Probably.
That would that would be the first step then.
And I plan on getting to know it pretty well and reading through and then having revisions and knock on wood, you know, I'll I'll be here.
Yeah.
Every day of the week, the next couple of weeks. If not, then I'll get to know it even faster, so.
Okay.
I have a question with this uh this exposed fastener thing. I've heard through the grapevine about it. Um I talked to uh to Tim.
Ag Miller.
Ag Miller.
Yep.
He said. I I can't remember how he put it, but you you all you have to put in your building plan that there is gonna be fasteners on the building to. So that you guys know about that. Is that correct or how does that? That was just, I was basically what I was doing is is.
Yeah.
A standard, you know, it's a bullshit. It's dressed up so it looks like, you know, I I don't want, this is what I've always wanted to do in my life. To have a shop like this. So I don't want it to look like a piece of junk. So that's what he he had told me on that aspect.
That would that would need a variance from the planning and zoning then because that's the the uh. The ordinance states that. It has to be concealed fasteners.
For each. For each zoning district or does it vary by district?
Ah, I think.
I might vary by district.
Well.
I think it might vary by district because if he's in an industrial zoning district.
It might vary by district.
Well.
Could be right, could be right. That would have to be looked into.
It might be different than. Yeah.
Cause I know it's against the central business district, you can't, you can't have. That was in a central business district.
That was the previous issue.
Yes, that's right. Yeah.
But I think we have exposed fasteners on that motel. We have them on there. That guy did that. And there are exposed fasteners. And we're gonna hear about it.
What was that?
And that's a. That's a what, a B one? The motel?
Yes.
What is Dollar General?
B one.
And we made Dollar General change.
Your what? We made them change.
We did.
Yep.
So this is B one too? So it's the same or not?
He'd be I one.
Different, yeah. I was gonna say, I mean, out there it's not.
I one, okay. Could be, you could be right, okay.
He'd be an I one.
And that would be my concern, splitting that property in half, especially if if you take the whole thing and you're gonna do some stuff on the back end to mitigate sound and and all of that. Because for me, from my perspective, it's almost a little bit of bait and switch. If you've got a residential area that exists next to something that's zoned ag and all of a sudden you turn that. Into industrial zone.
Mm-hmm.
And if you have that whole property, you're saying that you're going to do some things at the back end to mitigate the sound and the what they can see and everything.
A separation, a better separation.
A separation. Whereas if we split it in half and had two um businesses doing some sort of industrial thing, that mitigation might not exist. Another another building might not or another company might not do something like that, in which case it might be more aggravating for the people in the residential area.
Mm-hmm.
Why? I agree hundred percent because we could be creating another Northland drying situation.
Bingo.
And I I don't think anybody in this room wants to go through that again.
And the last thing I want is neighbors that that are upset.
Sorry, Matt.
I didn't say that to insult you. I said that so we could.
I understand where you're going. I'm feeling for him saying, yes, you want that.
Okay, well, those are all things that need to be done on planning for the uh comprehensive plan.
So we should move forward with all our public hearings and.
Modification.
Yep.
I think so.
And we just take it step by step.
Yep.
Keep this moving along.
Without delay, keep it moving, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you doing.
Michael, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Item number seventeen, discussion on enrollment Minnesota state retirement, M S R S deferred comp plan.
This is something I understand that administrator Melvin had been looking at but never moved forward with. It would be for city employees to have. To put some of their funds in besides P E R A. We don't have to change our personnel policy. I did speak, I called this company because it had been sitting on my desk when I started here. And talked to Lisa about it. She said, yes, Pat had looked into it, but it was never, we never enrolled in it.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't cost us, doesn't cost us anything. Employees like I would enroll and put my money in to this. It it's like an I R A.
It's a personal savings plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Who administered the Minnesota?
He suggested. Lisa would.
Okay, so we're gonna have to have someone from the city administer this plan.
There is somebody from, Lisa would have to set up the account and she would have to put the money in there. She would have to transfer money into there just like she does with P E R A. She said she was okay with that. I asked her, does that concern you? Are you okay with doing that? She said, as long as someone walks her through how to do it. And I did talk to these guys and they said they would help, they would walk Lisa through how to do it.
Have the employees said this is something they want?
I.
Is it, is it?
One of them reached out to me and said, this is some, is there some other way that I can put some money away? So I said, well, this was on my desk to look at doing.
Okay.
Do we have a H S A that they can contribute to? Are they doing that?
It's only up to thirty-two. It's not very much money you can put in that H S A. That's something we just looked at. It wasn't a lot of money.
It's limited.
You. Are you sure? Cause I know the the limit is six thousand or seven thousand dollars a year that you can put in. Now, if the city is put, yeah, for a family, so if the city's.
For a family, yeah.
City puts, you know, eighteen?
City's putting in eighteen hundred dollars per, then, you know, the employee can put in the balance.
Eighteen hundred.
Yes.
And then if it's through South Central, um which I believe it is, cause that's who we have our insurance with.
Mm-hmm.
Um once your H S A uh has at least a thousand dollars uh balance in there, you can transfer some of those money into their retirement side instead of the H S A side.
Hmm, I always thought H S As were strictly for health related.
Health related expenses.
That's what I thought too.
Look into it because I have the same thing.
Because we did check into how much and it was like thirty-seven hundred is sticking in my mind that employees could put into our H S A. It wasn't a lot of money.
Single maybe?
Yeah, I think that's.
Single.
And this one you could put a lot more in.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um.
It's just another option. Employees don't have to do it. It just could be an option for them to.
I I just.
Yeah, are there different funds that they that they're able to choose from? Are these are these metro funds or is it just like bonds or?
I think they can direct their own.
I think.
I think they can.
We can choose.
Majority of the time, not using your name, but average Joe isn't capable of making those.
Of picking.
Decisions.
Account changes.
He's he's not an average Joe.
I'm very capable. I don't, I do my own myself, but a lot of people don't because they have no clue what they're doing.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I've been saying, the average guy, he's better off with someone sitting there telling him what to do.
No, there's there's.
What to where to put in.
If you don't know what the end result's going to be.
I'm following things very closely. And pulled out at the end of December, so I'm sitting pretty good.
Diddle.
Did you know, you knew this was gonna happen?
It's the same.
Oh, yeah.
It was up twenty, twenty-eight percent.
Did you?
Yeah.
Everybody had a good year last year.
I'd like to see, let's check into what's going on with the South Central piece that we have and what that part looks like. With the H S A and then putting it into a different fund right there. And then that's one account for, I'd like to look at that or whatever as well.
I know where my wife would, you could take any money out of that.
I ju- I just hate to put another task on Lisa.
I know we looked at this because somebody just asked you about it.
There might be more options, but I know where she were, you could not do that.
I I just like to see um not put anything more on Lisa. We're trying to, and and I know this is minimal.
Mm-hmm.
But she's already been overloaded for a long, long time.
Is there a way to?
And even to add a little bit.
To find out like what the cut sheet is of what the options are?
I could probably call them and ask them and tell them, let us know what the options are.
I feel they're two separate plans. I mean, they're two.
They're they're two separate things.
One is specifically for health related, like deductibles, copays, premiums.
Because this company offers that option too.
You can roll it in though.
Yeah.
Into um retirement like Michelle was saying.
The health insurance, what? The H S A you can?
Yes.
See, my wife could not.
That must be a hybrid.
Well, this one that I have has the same company that we have does.
Company, that could have been a company policy.
Just saying, so.
But the health savings is is really a good option because you can use that for for so many things.
We have the health savings.
We have that already, yeah.
Yeah.
We have the health savings options for everybody.
Encouraging people to utilize it is, can save them a lot of money in the long run.
Okay.
This is just an option so that they have more retirement money besides P E R A employees.
So direct administration to get more information on this and on the H S A for a future meeting? Okay. Item eighteen, COVID nineteen discussion, open for discussion.
The shutdown.
Yeah, I'm looking for direction. Some cities, I was following it today, some cities have completely shut down.
Yeah.
Except for emergency personnel.
Right, police, fire, ambulance. In other words, office staff also?
Police department, they would. Office staff are at home.
Okay.
What does that mean for them though?
Then we'd have nobody at the window.
No, so I I'm, I just.
They would do their work from home, is what I think.
So they still, they still technically are getting, gonna get paid from the city? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Mm-hmm, except it would be at home.
So how 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 would they get their tasks?
Well, I think it depends on.
They'll log into their emails or?
Who you are, like some of my stuff, I can do most of my stuff from wherever. And Michael is planning and zoning as well. But Lisa needs, you need to be here to be a companion, which is our accounting software. You have to be hooked up to the network here.
She's not able to remote desktop in from home?
No, we don't have that capability.
So is there, what's the harm of just having her come in to do that?
Just her, by herself, wanting to go.
Just close it to the public. Yeah, close it to the public.
It's not open to the public.
Right, and Jane is a temp employee, so she just wouldn't be paid while we were closed down.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
That that's my only concern is who who's doing what and how are they?
Say, who's gonna do the work?
Lisa would have to, she'd have to come in here to do her work.
Well, Lisa would have to come in.
And she, who would do Jane's work?
Jane would, well, I don't know.
I mean, she's doing work now. We don't have to pay her and she can go home, but who's gonna do the duties?
She's doing.
Then nobody would do anything with the community center and processing payments would be Lisa, just cause people would still drop their utility payments in the.
During the time.
Yeah.
Somebody would have to process, you know, or mail them in. Lisa'd have to get the mail, Lisa'd have to do the deposits.
Or mail them in. Mm-hmm.
But the mail is potentially uh, I mean, can we go to payment online only for the timeframe?
I did put something on social media today, encouraging people. Yeah, that was me. I popped in and I'm like, if you could pay online, that way you don't have to come in here, but.
Cause I mean, if you get technical about it, I mean, if she goes out to access the, if somebody was exposed, it it could become.
Right, she's touching that stuff. Mm-hmm.
Are those fees applied for the online payment, the ones that are listed on there?
If you pay with a credit card, yeah, you pay an extra two points on.
It says two bucks for credit card or ten percent. And then, or it's ten percent minimum of two.
Mm-hmm. You have to pay extra. Yes.
And then one fifty for the e-check, right?
Mm-hmm, so they have to pay that fee.
I don't know. My thinking is, I don't know that we have to close the city office down. We have four employees there. I mean.
Up to you guys. That's why I put it on for discussion. I want feedback from you guys.
I think in a county where almost twenty percent of our population is considered in the vulnerable populations for this thing, if we stay open, it kinda sets. A tone, like we're not taking it seriously. If we close and make it very clear that we are concerned about this well-being and safety. Of, I don't know, the population, it serves us well. I mean, now Trump is saying no more than ten people at a time at any meeting. I mean, they're closing in on this. If we get ahead of it now, maybe we can actually make a difference. I don't see why we couldn't just close the building to the public.
That's, I would say, that way we can.
That's my thinking. That's my thinking right there.
That would be.
Just close it to the public and still get the work done.
Still, still get the work done.
Still get the work done, right.
We keep our four employees here to work.
Right, yeah.
And lock the door.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't, yeah, put a notice in the paper. You're gonna have to pay your bills online. And some people are gonna probably.
No, put them in the mailbox, okay.
Put it in the drop box.
Or put them in the drop box and those people still have access to the city by phone, email, text, whatever.
Mm-hmm, won't be able to come back. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They still can contact the city office. It just isn't person to person. I would be more than on board with that.
Right, but we keep our doors locked. Yeah.
I like.
I just don't like the idea of shutting the city down.
No, I guess that's not what I was meaning. I just meant to close the building to the public.
I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would agree with that one hundred percent. Because they can still get their ta- like I said, they get their tasks done. People can take care of what they want just through another avenue.
Yeah.
If any of the employees are starting to feel sick, they need to stay home.
Stay home.
They need to stay.
Go home, yeah.
And then if they get tested.
Their family members are another thing. So we've we've got, our, my work has really gone into this and it's, you know, any other family member is affected. Cause I mean, ultimately they could be having it and then spread it to the whole staff who then, you know, then brings it home to their family and spreads it to them and.
Mm-hmm.
You know, grandmother, grandfather could be watching their children and get it and, yeah, it's.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I was told to work from home for my day job today and the line staff will probably be closed, so I won't have that job now.
Yeah.
Tomorrow will be closed.
Tomorrow will be closed at five.
Along with everything else.
Yeah.
Yep.
We are gonna, I noticed today, not to, I go into coffee every morning. We sat there and there weren't. Normally in the morning from six till, sometimes we sit there till eight, eight thirty. That's my job.
Yeah.
But anyways, you'll see twenty people an hour coming in there or more. Today in two hours, I maybe saw seven people come in. You looked at the highway. There was nobody on the road. When I left, I drove by Kickers. I don't think he bakes on Monday, but I think the coffee shop's still open. It was empty.
It was empty this morning.
I thought he was closed all.
Okay, I thought Monday, I'm gonna look, it that doesn't matter, but I'm saying like the gas station, there's there, there's nobody out there now.
It's good though. People are taking it seriously. They need to.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Well, it's good, but it's hurting our businesses in town.
Well, of course it is, but you know what? It's gonna hurt business even more if all the people who are at risk groups die from this.
So I guess, I guess my.
The government's going to, I don't like that, but the government's going to, they passed two packages already.
My piece towards.
And there's another one for three quarter of a trillion dollars about ready to be passed to cover all these expenses.
Well, you can't get back lost income from people not going to your business. You can't regain that, even if you're buying gift cards.
Like.
And then use it them next month, the next month you're not having that income. All that I'm saying is that is there something that maybe we can have the E D A work on to come up and maybe contact.
Well, it's.
Our businesses in town to see what would help them specifically. Maybe it's waiving like liquor licenses this year, something that we can control that we can help. Our businesses in town, show them that we care, show them that we are there for them and are trying to support them in some way. Honestly, even a little gesture is gonna be huge for them, right? Show our support. Cause this is, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody's ever seen it, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to do, I'd like to, I'd like to have them work on something.
I think E D A will have to brainstorm because like you said.
I know one um restaurant owner that's gonna go to delivery is gonna be approaching a a a different city council about a temporary off sale liquor license. So they can deliver beer with their pizzas, you know, but I, it's it's things like that where you're adapting kinda on the fly, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Well, what's wrong with that?
Nothing. I I think it's great. I think it's great.
I mean, just as long as you see on the other end that you check their I D just like you would if they come into your store.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we used to have alcohol delivery, but they just leave it on the porch.
It was an after-school special, wasn't it?
But. Yeah, yeah, something like that, you know, but um, it was a long time ago.
I know this afternoon, this afternoon, the governor was having his news conference and after he spoke, Andrew Zimmer got up and spoke on the uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the restaurant industry. And he said, he said most, or he said a good share of the restaurants will reopen after this all over, but he said some won't.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Some will just not be able to take the, take a loss of revenue.
Well, it's gonna kill somebody.
Well, they still have overhead. So if they have a business loan, they have to pay that, they have utilities.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Now, they still, they still can sell food to go or deliver off-site. They can't, you know, they have to.
If they sell food.
Yeah, that that'll be. Restrict, stay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But if they don't sell food.
Yeah.
Then they're closed.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Right, yeah.
Other businesses.
If I own a bar, I'm very concerned right now.
So.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Because my business is probably going right down the tubes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, Kenny and I right now because of this, we have no income, none. And he's he's out of work tomorrow, so it'll be interesting times.
Yeah. No unemployment? He can collect unemployment, Kenny?
I will, yeah, are they doing that?
Yeah, they're, they've already.
Most places are, yeah, but like claiming it as a layoff and therefore.
Yes.
And they're already changing that so that that there, I believe the money's already been passed to exp- to extend the timeframes.
There's no rest.
Mm-hmm.
As I said, there's another seven hundred and fifty billion dollar package.
They said you had to apply online directly, not to call, cause the call centers will be over and come with.
Just wait till the internet goes down, cause everybody's.
I know, right. I thought, I know.
Yeah, I'm a crash. But yeah, I know, I know there is.
It's slower and slower and slower.
Mm-hmm, that's good to know.
So that's one option.
That's why I'm.
Might not be best, but.
That's why I was so slow today.
That's all our stocks are gonna now.
I noticed you were slower.
All our stocks crashed too, so.
Yeah. Well, if we're gonna do something, ladies and gentlemen, there's no reason to delay. If we're gonna order that city hall is closed down, locked down. Then we should do it starting tomorrow morning?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
What about future meetings?
That's.
Well, our next one's three weeks from, or at least our next council meetings.
Can we?
Yeah.
Planning and zoning is the next meeting.
Monday, no, planning and zoning. Well, Monday, you, that was.
Monday I was going to have an ambulance committee meeting. Do we wanna say no even small meetings?
Well, I mean, I think, I don't wanna not have meetings. I think the needs to, things need to happen and be productive and.
Yeah, that. We're still, yeah.
And get work done, right? There's a lot of things that are sitting there that have timelines that we have to address.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But maybe approaching it in a different way, instead of sitting so close to one another, we could maybe move out of this room and move into the community center.
Yeah.
Have more space for anybody that.
Just a further part.
But do they need to be open to the public?
Yeah, a further part.
Yes.
So is there a way that we can either, well, I mean, we can hold open public meetings, I.
Can't close them.
And do the same thing, have it in there. If we have public meetings, have it there so people can spread out.
Yeah.
There also is anything until the second, as far as I know, which is the council.
A bigger meeting, yeah.
Right.
That's your planning and zoning is the next meeting, April second.
Second. It is the sixth.
And they, that might not be really heavily attended.
Yeah, April sixth, the city council, he has a planning and zoning though, April second.
City council. Yeah, okay.
We.
April second, and I'm gonna talk to them tomorrow, and we could reschedule that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we have any public hearings or anything on there just yet, or maybe one.
Tony, if you're gonna look at the complaint.
And if there is a look at it, and if, if the complaint gets moved out, but that could be a later thing as well.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, I talked with Amy earlier, it, it could be out there to give more space and we have two microphones, if not more, that can be set up, a wireless mic and then something in the back possibly, it's easy to reach to, to come up and speak at it, if someone really needs to, like.
Pass it around.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we need to really be mindful of, you know, the other restrictions that are coming down the pipe, you know, because like right now.
It's changing, mm-hmm.
Right, I mean, the president's saying not more than ten people in a room, we have more than ten people in this room tonight, if we continue with these meetings, then we're not.
We're gonna have more than, even if we're out there, we're gonna have more than ten, if we're in a public meeting.
Or. Or inviting the public to pass around a microphone.
But we can.
Yeah.
They're all touching now, mm-hmm.
Hands and face all over.
We could still, for the interim, eliminate a street report where Kirby could write it up, send it to Amy, and we can all get a copy of that.
He doesn't need to, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So that eliminates one more person here, we can do it the same with the police department, a lot of those people.
He doesn't have that.
There's ways we can get this done without having them, and we can keep this group down to a very.
People here.
If we can do that, how, when does this broadcast, it's not like live on TV right now.
No, we mail it off to GFW whenever they.
No. That might be on two, two or three weeks or a month.
It's quick.
Probably a month later.
No, it's.
Two or three weeks, so.
I thought it was the next day, I thought it was like Tuesdays or Wednesdays.
Not even, it's quick.
Is it quick?
It's quick, yes.
Really?
Arlington's on, yeah, I think two, two days, two back-to-back days.
Was it the sort of thing we can encourage the public to just view it after the fact? I don't know.
Yeah.
The other thing that we could do is probably even do like a live stream or something like that.
Could do it on YouTube, we could create a City of Arlington YouTube channel and.
Yeah. Lisa does it on Facebook.
You could do it Facebook Live.
They stream all of them on Facebook.
We could still have time for Kirk to put in the paper, it's gone, but tomorrow's Tuesday, he could put a little blurb in the paper.
A lot of people.
I mean.
So.
He left before we made the announcement, but I'll text him.
Yeah, you gotta get a little bit more in tomorrow.
I'll let him know.
Yeah. That way we can cut our council, and we can really, some of these council meetings, if we needed to shorten it up, there's ways to shorten this up.
Well, and there's also.
Is it worth it though?
Take care, well, we could take, we have to take care of the bills, they have to be paid all the time.
Mm-hmm.
But there's also a way that we can have, um, virtual meetings or just as well.
We could, you guys wouldn't all have to be here, yeah, we could have.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd almost prefer that, yeah, I mean, I, I'm concerned because Kenny's on the ambulance, if I get exposed, he gets exposed, now we're down one person on the ambulance.
That's what I would prefer too.
Sometimes you don't know it, right?
Yeah, well, five, four of us could be exposed right now.
Right, right.
And be a carrier, and just because it doesn't show it to me, doesn't mean I can't give it to you.
See where they are.
See their face and hear their voice, right, so you can.
Yeah.
Can you find the hospital, I never see it.
Right, yeah, we just, there's, we just don't know.
That, that's happening now.
We just don't know them.
When they start swabbing people, now they're gonna find out how big this really is.
And I was sick one time. They're not sick, yeah.
And that's why, I don't know, I advocate for everybody, just stay away from each other, don't come out, just stay in.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't do these meetings, or?
That would be my preference.
Well, that's, this isn't, I'm not a germaphobe and I, uh, I'm not necessarily concerned of myself, but I mean, how would I feel if somehow I ended up with it, I touched the door handle, you know, Tom ended up getting it and, you know, something severely happened to him.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I mean, it just, I don't know.
I'll be honest, I'm not overly concerned about that, Joe.
But I, I mean, it can happen and, and there's a, the website world-o-meter, you can go on and you can see this, the, 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 um, the actual percentages and the age, and the age of the individuals and, and, uh, so it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I brought groceries up to my ninety-three-year-old mother-in-law yesterday. And, you know, you read about what's going on in, in Italy, they're not doing too much to save ninety-three-year-olds anymore, they, they're just letting them go.
Actually, yeah, they're. The, the younger folks are getting the, the treatment.
Yeah.
They're picking who they save.
Uh, they're, they're, yeah, they've got to the point where they have to.
They're picking who they save. Well, they have no choice.
And that's what potentially, you know, throughout the community, if it, if it were to start to spread now.
About forty days behind, um.
So.
So can we do some sort of virtual meeting, can we set that up?
Well, we have time, so let me check with the League of Minnesota Cities, I saw stuff coming down the pipe and the different, um, groups I'm part of.
Yeah.
They're brainstorming, what do we do, do meet meetings, people are thinking, yeah, everybody's thinking about this.
Everybody's looking, doing, looking at the same thing. I know, I know the law used to, the mayor and I were just discussing this.
Mm-hmm.
And Schultz taking advantage of this, uh, you have to be able, not only to hear, but to visually see.
See them.
The person that's, uh, um.
On the other end.
On the other end of the telecamera. Do you think there might be a thing where they'd rela- relax or waive that restriction?
Well, I mean, there's things like Zoom, right, so Zoom, you can, one person facilitates and you can see the face and hear the voices of the rest that are on there.
In this, in this case.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you could also probably put that on, uh, YouTube channel live and or Facebook live, you know, as you're doing it. I mean, I'm, there, if there's a will, there's a way, because, I mean, it's just so, even, well, I don't know if everybody has iPhones, but I mean, I can have a conference.
There's gotta be. Yeah, it's gotta be a way. Yeah. FaceTime.
You have to have an iPhone for that.
I got that.
With.
But I mean, Google has their hangouts.
Skype does the same thing.
Google hangouts, Skype calls.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many different platforms, it's just whatever you would probably feel comfortable working with because you would be the one facilitating the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know about YouTube for me.
Oh, come on.
That's like.
YouTube.
You were already on there, search it.
Yeah, yeah, you're, all these meetings are on YouTube.
You are.
Oh, for real?
Yes, for real.
Every one of them.
Oh, really?
You've gone to YouTube and searched for a meeting, now all from YouTube, every one of them, I've watched numerous ones on YouTube.
Does we have to be?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Now, all from YouTube, yes.